My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm chairman of the planning board. I call this meeting of the planning board on December 12th, 2022, to order at 6:38 PM. I would like a roll call, please, of the board members. Robert, can we start with you?
Robert Theryan here.
Carol Hofstas present.
And Laura Schifrin present. Uh, please all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to all of our veterans as well as those that are serving now, um, as well as our own board member, Ian Ortiz, which is why he's not with us tonight. Um, and as Harley said, the meeting is being recorded. Next on our agenda, 1.4 Chairman's additions, deletions to the agenda unforeseen 48 hours before this meeting. I do not have any. 1.5 Approval of minutes of November 7th, 2022 and November 16th, 2022. And those were in our portal for review. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 7 November and 16 November, 2022.
And is there a second?
I second. Robert.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote for approval.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Theryan here.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. 1.6 Review of volunteer response forms for our board vacancy. I understand there are none. Beth?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of people here tonight and I welcome anybody who's interested to fill out a volunteer form because we do have a vacancy. Um, okay, we are almost, I've got four minutes before I call the public hearing, so. Um, what can I do in four minutes? Um, is the building commissioner on? I don't think I saw him. No. Um, okay. Under 4.2, we received a new stormwater management application for Five Turnpike Road. Um, that was recent, but I would like it if the board would acknowledge receipt. And also that we move that 4.2 um, to our January 9th meeting.
I make a motion, uh, we acknowledge it's been received and it be moved to January 14th meeting.
You know, second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Beth, I would just ask, that's not going to be a public hearing, we're just going to move, um, we're going to review it between now and then and then discuss it, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And the other thing that I just wanted the board to understand because there are major and minor stormwater management projects. And since the town doesn't have a land use coordinator right now, the planning board is stepping in to, um, to do that review. And, um, I have done a cursory review and this, uh, application is a major stormwater management permit. And the planning board will be reviewing it. So that's just one thing I want to add.
Okay. So I'd also like to, um, address 4.3, which is a new stormwater management application received regarding 25 Harbor Trace Road. If the board, um, pleases to accept it and also move it to the January 9th meeting.
I so move to accept the application that's been received and it be moved to the January 9th meeting.
And is there a second?
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Theryan here.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. And we are at 43. Um, 4.4 Letter from Department of Housing and Community Development to the Town Administrator Determination of In-Term Compliance Under Mass General Law 40A Section 3A. Uh, Beth?
Yeah, I can screen share that if you'd like. Um, let me see if I can just pull it up.
Is this just an acknowledgement of the letter at this point?
Yeah, it's the acknowledgement that the, um, the action plan that was submitted by the previous land use coordinator has been accepted by the state. And at the time, yeah, so it does give the town a bit of longer timeline for compliance. I think it's 2025, but I don't have it right in front of me.
Oh, that's typical of us just moving as slow as a turtle. Um, so, okay, so just have the record show that we have, um, acknowledged the letter that came in and the acceptance of the past land use coordinators, um, plan.
Action plan, okay.
Okay, the actual plan.
And I'll actually get that to the board as well. Uh, it was, it's not a formal plan like you would think of a plan, plan. It's just more of a response to a questionnaire, if you will, but it's important document for the planning board to have.
Okay. All right, we're at 6:45 PM. And we have two hearings that are being continued. And the first one that we will address is 227 Mason Road. Um, Brian Schulman, um, proposed project change of use to operate a commercial kennel in a residential district. And is Brian with us?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so again, okay, so again, I've opened the public hearing for 227 Main Street and I need a roll call vote of the board to open the hearing. So.
Carol Hofstas present.
Robert Theryan present.
And Laura Schifrin present. I've already announced that there's a public sign in sheet, so please, anyone who's in attendance in the, um, in the selectmen's office, sign that sheet. We already know that Brittany is iPhone and I believe everyone else who is on Zoom has been identified. Okay, and you have that, Beth, you have everyone, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, Brian, can you fill us in and of where you are?
I believe everything should be all set. I think I squared up with Beth earlier today. The last piece of the puzzle was the, uh, updated drawings. But I just, I just dropped off some paper copy for you guys earlier today.
Okay. Uh, Beth, should I be reading the additional comments from the town, et cetera? That, um, that's on my sheet?
You certainly can. And it's, there was a lot of information received, so, I mean, the applicant is there, you certainly can can go through that.
Okay, so, um, for the record, I will read the additional comments from town officials and the applicant. Uh, oh, maybe I will, this is a list of them.
Hmm, you can read the list.
Well, we have, um, is this something you can put on screen share?
Uh, yep, let me pull it up. Sure. It's all in.
I don't know if anybody's going to have any questions on this, so we have a letter from the conservation agent.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Looks like this one one for me, yeah.
Have to be.
It's better.
Numbers or concerns? Yeah, can I just, I, yeah, I need those other documents.
There you go.
If we have them here, then I should be reading them into the record. Because the, these, um, documents are since the opening of the hearing, right?
Yes. Can I mostly?
Yeah.
All right, we received an email right there.
Okay, so I am writing to this evening to support Chester's Place Dog Boarding as they go through the process of reopening. I live in Bratton and by word of mouth from a neighbor, um, that raises, um, just a moment. Okay, this is, I'm in a difficult position here. Um, so, anyway, this is a, a letter of support for, and this is, uh, Paul Pugh, who's also in attendance here this evening. Uh, go on to the next one, please.
Yeah, this was more for, um, just proof of one of the requests of the ZBA that, um, he provide proof that the, uh, the HVAC system was indeed replaced. So that's why this was included. It's a compliance with, um, this was a statement regarding the police referral comment. Do you want me to move on? It's basically that the court case was, um, dismissed. Um, this is a exhibit where, um, the applicant is compliant with Conservation Commission permitting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I went, I went ahead, um, Chair Chairman Schifrin and just went through the other two documents.
No, I, I heard that. I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic off.
Okay. And, all right, uh, then this is the Townsend Board of Health, that is the approval of the septic with conditions. And, um, so that, uh, oh, there was one other thing that I don't have for you and I apologize, but, um, the applicant did receive the special permit. It was granted by the zoning board of appeals on November 30th for, um, a commercial dog kennel. Uh, I am in the process of drafting that decision. It's due in a couple days, so I am working hard on that, but, um, I just thought the board, you know, it's important for the board to know that they did, um, they were issued that special permit, so, and the site plan that was submitted today is right here.
Are there any questions from the board?
I don't have any, Laura, not for me.
Carol?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, and, and neither do I. So, um, Beth, what is our next step that we can do right now? Do we have to wait until the 9th? Oh, uh, Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I was just going to answer any questions that anybody may have or address any, any further concerns if, if anybody had any.
Okay. So we've done that. Is there anyone in, in the selectmen's office or that's attending this hearing that wants to say anything?
Uh, hi, Brian. Um, okay, good one. I live at 211 Mason Road, a couple houses out.
How you doing?
Um, hi, good. My main concerns are the noise, like I know you had mentioned maybe the dogs, the Eskimo dogs, Huskies. I sat out and listened for four hours and there were four or five different voices. I know it was more than a couple dogs and it was like literally four hours where incessant barking. Um, I'm wondering what your plans are for, um, to try and keep it down to, you know, some kind of tolerable, I know dogs can bark sometimes. Some get them going, but I mean, literally four hours straight of, uh, you know, and that's kind of my concern. I'm retired now from a, an injury and I like sitting out on my deck enjoying the, you know, the good weather and, uh, you know, it sounds like the zoning board and everything is taking care of the groundwater, uh, your waste management. Um, you know, I don't know if there are any concerns about, um, you know, the water drainage. Imagine deposing off the urine and scooping up the, you know, uh, solid waste. But, um, so I have a little bit of concerns about the groundwater. Maybe odor in the air or something, I kind of think that would be far, you know, probably most likely, but my main concern is the molders.
So, uh, one of the things that we do, um, maybe different, maybe I didn't really explain this very well before. So the, the way the town describes this is as a quote unquote commercial account. And when, when I picture what would be considered a commercial kennel, I picture, you know, one of these facilities where you've got a bunch of cages and dogs, right, right? That's not what we do. We, this is our home first. So the, the dogs that we have or that we had prior, you know, to going through this process were, they, they stay with us. We, we operate on like a pack mentality. So we don't lock dogs away in crates or cages. There's the good kennels outdoors. The only time the dogs are ever outside is when we're literally out there with them, so they, they can either play or, you know, do their business outside, so we don't, we haven't, nor would we ever lock dogs outside for hours on end without supervision, you know? Um, I, I can't attest to those specific times that you heard.
Right.
But I'm sure it had, it wasn't us, because that's not what we do. That's, that was always a huge thing for us was making sure that we were respecting all the neighbors and, you know, everybody in, in the surrounding area, because nobody wants to hear dogs barking nonstop all day long. I completely understand that. Um, so with us being there with them all the time, if something's going on where they're, you know, something's bothering them or something's getting them going, we're going to address it right there on the spot rather than just letting them aimlessly, you know, bark nonstop for extended periods of time. The one thing, um, with respect to the, the waste, one thing, significant thing that we changed is we're no longer dealing with the, the composting of the dog waste. That seemed to be a big issue with a lot of the different departments and the Board of Health. So we decided that it was, it was a better idea working with the boards to just have a dumpster on site to dispose of all the waste. So we don't have any, we eliminate those issues of the, you know, worrying about the, the water runoff with the composting and whatnot. So that was, that was what we did to kind of rectify that, that situation.
Okay, and I did see that, um, Beth, thank you for putting the Board of Health letter up there. And a lot of the things that were brought up were addressed in the letter by, uh, Mr. Medcalf, so I, I think you're pretty good footing now and with your last explanation of the compost, um, I think that clarifies that. Anything else?
Uh, I have a question to Mr. Schulman.
Sure.
Um, the hours of operation.
We don't really have a set schedule. I mean, normally we had drop offs or pickups was between six and eight in the morning and then pickups at night were usually between three and six.
Right.
But that was a very, that was not really set in stone. That was more of a guideline.
If I'm understanding this, then any times that the dogs are outside will be during regular business hours, pretty much.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Beth, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, so I can entertain a motion to, um, have this approved subject to the written decision? Um, or do you want us to have you do the written decision and we make it on, we have to then continue with this to the 9th?
You can close a public hearing, but the board will need a super majority to pass, which means you'll need four affirmative votes of four members. And you don't have that tonight, so.
So we can.
Close a public hearing, I can write the decision and then the next time the board meets, you can actually take the vote.
Okay. All right, I agree with that. Um, all right, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, yeah, yeah, that's right, you can do that, sorry.
Yeah. Because there is no further discussion, I already asked for it.
Exactly. Right.
So I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing on December 12th at 6:59 PM.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for 227 Mason Road on December 12th at 6:59 PM.
Yes, and there's a second.
I, uh, I make a second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain the roll call vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Theryan here.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much, everyone. And, and.
Do I have to? Do I?
You don't.
Mr.
Yeah. We've closed the public hearing, a decision, a decision will be written. And then the next time we meet, it will be discussed by the board. And we'll be in touch with you.
Gotcha.
We don't have a court.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cause you're welcome.
And best wishes to you.
Thanks.
So our next, uh, public hearing continuance is for two, is for 22 Main Street Veterinary Hospital for special permit and I will open that continuance at 7:01 PM with a roll call vote of the board.
Thank you.
Carol Hofstas, present.
Robert Theryan, present.
Laura Schifrin, present. Okay, is Sally with us?
Present.
Okay, um, Sally, you have submitted the executed contract um, with an engineer for the site plan, which is what was, we were asked, uh, of you at our last meeting. Um, and we do not have an expected date. Stan, you're here. Uh, one confirmation, I read the contract and it does say that you're, you will begin, um, in a timely manner as soon as you have received the signed contract and the retainer. Have you done that?
Yes, we expect to submit something, uh, sometime in January to the board.
Okay, so if we continue this to, I think it's, um, oh, January 23rd?
I think that would be, I think that would be a, a good date to continue to.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I think that that's about what we can do tonight. Thank you for the contract, um, Ms. Cerber, and we will continue this until January 23rd at 6:45 PM. Does that time work, Beth?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a Monday?
Uh, that's what you have on our, our agenda.
That's a Monday.
That's excellent, 6:45.
On the 23rd. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 22 Main Street Veterinary Hospital Site Plan Review Special Permit to January 23rd at 6:45 PM. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing of 22 Main Street Site Plan Review Special Permit to 23 January, 2023 at 6:45 PM.
And is there a, a second?
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Okay.
Robert Theryan here.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, the, um, and now I will entertain a motion, no, we've continued, so I don't need another motion. Okay. So thank you very much, Sally, and thank you, Sandilis, for that information. Next on our agenda.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, I see that the, uh, Mr. Covenor is there. Um, he's for, he's here for the 106 Barker Hill Road A and R. If that's, if that's something you.
Oh, I, I can do that because it's not a, a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and, okay. So where is? Where is he?
Here.
If he is there, ask him to come up to the, to the table to speak.
To the table and, um, speak in reference to your A and R plan.
Robert, I've got a chair already.
Is he there? Oh, welcome. Um.
Want me to screen share it?
Yes, please.
All right.
This would be his plan, right, that you're going to screen share?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, good evening. My name is Kevin Conover. I'm from David Ross Associates and I represent Dean Scholemberg for, uh, a creation of a parcel on the Westerly side of Barker Hill Road. Um, we're designating, um, parcel A on a plan that's, uh, noting that it's not a building lot, but it's going to be conveyed in a joint and annex with an adjoining lot two to form one undivided lot. This lot is the exact same, um, lot configuration on a plan that was endorsed by the Townsend Planning Board in February of 1999. Um, the client requested us to resubmit this plan for endorsement because it shows, um, a more up to date, uh, schedule of, of buildings and septic system on the existing lot. Uh, it's just as a opportunity to show conformance to all the required, required setbacks. Um, we feel that, uh, this lot should be endorsed, um, for an A and R based upon its conformance with the front gen area requirements.
So I'm, okay, so I'm familiar with that. And and you're, this is coming before us, why? Because I know that the two parcels were joined a long time ago.
Yeah, that's correct. So in 1999, like I said, the, the planning board endorsed an A and R to create parcel A, which can be conveyed from one lot to the other.
Oh, yeah.
This is to be conveyed in the opposite direction, so, um, so it's going from one owner to the next. So that's, that's the whole situation with that. And again, like I said, on my client, um, I expressed to him that he didn't need a new endorsement, uh, but it was his intention to show the existing structures on lot number one in an updated fashion.
Okay, so when you say it's going the other way, are you, is he returning parcel A to lot two?
That is correct.
Yes.
And he's not creating a nonconformity by doing that.
Oh. Well, I mean, I think he has every right to do that, but, okay. So, um, does the board have any questions?
No, there's no new structures going on, right? Nope.
Oh, that's really, okay, um, Carol, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, again, this is a approval not required, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to endorse the plan as presented.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
So is the plan supposed to show who will own parcel A?
In the notation form, we're stating that parcel A is not a building lot, but to be combined to an annex with adjoining land lot number two.
Okay.
Going to own by Robert Ugerian.
Okay. Okay, I did not, um, I couldn't read it. I couldn't read the print on, on your notes. But thank you. Okay, but at least you know I'm awake and wondering. Okay. Um, all righty then, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Carol Hofstra, yes.
Robert Therian, yes.
And Laura Schiffer, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have a quorum to endorse the plan?
Yes, we do.
Okay, awesome, awesome. So uh, Beth, just let me know when it uh, when it's ready for pickup, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, will do.
You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so then takes care of the 8:00 PM.
Oh, uh, and I saw, uh, I saw the building commissioner on the call, so if you could. Um, he was here. Oh, goodness. Yeah, he's here.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, great. We got you.
I, I got like a weird screen thing going on here with two screens in my wife's office, so I'm a little, little uh, I had, I had to turn it to a black screen because if I click on it, it puts a lot of light on me.
Okay, so I think we still, we do still have some time, so I can go out of order here.
Thank you.
Um, 4.1, Building Commissioner Request for Information Approval of 37 Burgess Road is a buildable lot. I don't remember that. So um, do you want to put that letter, share that screen, please, on the letter? And then uh, Eric, if you want to speak to it?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, so John Hussey has decided to convert the barn up there to a single-family home. Uh, he had an apartment up there, um, but I guess he realized that having uh, mixed use was going to be sprinklers and the best plan for him moving forward was to convert it to a single-family home. It is a residential district up there. Um, in researching all that, it appears that some type of turnaround was supposed to be constructed. And it looks like it got lost in the weeds to me, but um, you know, I, I had to, I, I originally had requested uh, confirmation from the planning board from him, but I, I don't think he is grasping what I'm asking for because he's just provided me with the documentation that we already have. So um, in my letter, it breaks down the, the timelines. I put them in order there, but there, he's resting his hat on a approval from former highway superintendent Ed Kukula, who said that um, the driveway was the turnaround. I don't think that's a turnaround. Um, to me, it doesn't look like one was built. Um, he approved something up there. Um, and it, and, and, but it's, there's no turnaround. It's, it's in the driveway. We don't have an easement, and I would assume that the turnaround was to be built in accordance with the planning board's regs, which you guys lay out a very specific type of turnaround. Um, and then there's no confirmation that, after all that information, after it was all said and done, there was no confirmation from planning that, yes, we accept this as your turnaround. So I'm wondering if he still needs to build this turnaround or if what we have on file is satisfactory and he can move forward and nothing has to be done up there. To me, there's no turnaround.
Um, I remember something about the turnaround and uh, Jeannie Hallows was our administrator then. So Beth, what do we have in the files? I didn't get to read the decision of the board at that time. Is there a plan that you included, Eric, that I should put up here?
There is no plan. Um, that, like I said, there's, there's no turnarounds. Basically, when the road was extended, that was, that was it. And then they built the barn. Um, the, the approval from planning says that if it was going to be used for residential, then a turnaround would have to be constructed.
Right.
He never used it for residential, so, so it doesn't appear that the turnaround was ever constructed. Um, like I said, there is a letter from Ed, but it looks like Ed has chosen to say that what's up there is acceptable, which I don't believe was under his purview, wasn't within his scope to modify what you guys had asked for. So I'm a little confused as to whether or not he does or doesn't have to build the turnaround up there because the um, the letter from the fire chief says that he would, he would have it a couple different ways. Um, neither of those ways are done, and it just looks like Ed approved it. He said, yeah, they dumped 122 tons out there. It's all set. They can use the driveway, but that's not what I would, I would expect for a turnaround. And if they did, if you guys did accept that, I would expect an easement because right now we have nothing, so there's no turnaround. We don't have an easement on his property to turn around in it. It just, you know, I guess we could just use it. Um, but to me, it, it doesn't look like it was constructed, and uh, they're, they're telling me it was.
So he's just gonna convert the, was that his retail barn that you're talking about?
Yes.
So he's going to convert that structure um, to a single-family residence?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know, Beth, where can we get further? Is there anything in any of the plant, plans? I remember there's supposed to be a turnaround.
I did put the letter of decision that was, that uh, was issued by the board back in 2016, and there are three findings.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's on the screen.
It is a dead-end street, best interest public to have a turnaround on Burgess Road, adequate for fire trucks, school bus. That's what I remember. I remember the school buses, okay? So um, yeah, so that's what he's got to have.
Okay.
Eric, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's, is this based on the original approval? Is this a change of use now? Or is it different?
It is, but it's changing to a, a use that only requires two parking spaces because he's going down to a single-family house and it's a residential district. It was formally allowed as a, as an extension of his agricultural use up there. Um, but I guess over time, there's a lot of history about this property, which will take way too long to get into. Um, there were, I can paraphrase very quickly, but there were four homes built, and then this law at the end. Um, the road was discontinued, but four homes were built after the fact. It, it, there's a lot of history there. Uh, and, and no one's getting into that. I mean, it is what it is. What's done is done. I'm just looking at the approval because I, their intention was to build a house up there at some point. In fact, the, the, the septic is a five-bedroom house plus retail. So whenever he did that 10 years ago, or something like that, seven years ago, when he built the barn, he had anticipated putting a house there. Um, unfortunately, he built an illegal apartment a couple months back, and that's how I stumbled upon it. And then once you start getting into what the building code would require to have the mixed use, he, he just thought, you know what, it would be much easier for me just to make this a single-family house, and I'm done. I don't really have to do as much modifications to it if I do that, and that's true. Um, he did have some back tax stuff to deal with with chapter 61 and um, and a couple other small things, but one of the things I wanted to make sure of was, yes, it was a, how, a building law, but it was a building law conditional upon the, the approve, the building of this turnaround. It wasn't just a, a buildable lot. It was, it was conditional.
That was correct.
But they, but the turnaround driveway was approved or um, assuming the use was different than it is now. Is that right?
To me, he didn't approve the turnaround. I mean, you guys can read it however, which way you like. To me, it says, what's up there? It looks good. They put 122 tons, and the turnaround's in the driveway. So I, I'm not, like I said, at the time when the highway superintendent did that, I don't think he had the, um, he, it wasn't within his scope to modify the planning board's decision as to say, yes, it's okay to turn around in the, in the driveway. That's not something the highway superintendent can do. He can't make decisions for the planning board. So I don't think it was built. It looks like, since there was no residential construction, it kind of just fell through the cracks.
Um, I think.
So basically that, so the existing footprint hasn't changed from what it was prior, right?
Correct.
Then the use now as a single-family residence is less than would be required for a mixed use or commercial use, correct?
Yes and no. Um, so 80% of fires occur in residential structures. Um, so if you look at it like that, so a turnaround is, is absolutely critical for residential. So we can get fire apparatus up there, so you can get school buses up there. As a retail establishment, yeah, you need that stuff, but it's, it's much more unlikely. Um, you know, so to me, yes, your, your intensity went down a little bit because now you don't have that many people, even though they're still going up there. They're just not going to the barn. Um, he's still a tree farm, so the intensity hasn't really changed. They're just using a different building. Um, now you have a single-family element at the very top of it with no fire hydrant, no, you know, no, how do you pick up the trash? Um, there's, there's a lot of other issues up there, and it looked like.
Dead-end road that just comes right up to the structure?
Yeah, so it dead-ends. It just dead-ends. If you look on, uh, if, if you want to pull up the Mr. Mapper, you can see, see it clearly. You've got plenty of room to turn around in that driveway, but like I said, that's fine if, if we can accept that, but I would expect an easement. Um, so, so we can legally turn around in the driveway as opposed to what it is now. It's just, somebody said it's okay.
I remember the fire trucks and the buses, school buses being a big issue, and it is residential. So there were children there, and if he's building a single-family home, then there may be more children in the future. So that was part of that decision.
Yeah, that's, that's how I read it. I just wanted to make sure because I'm going to send him back to you guys after he builds it, or he may appeal. He may appeal and say, no, it was done. Um, that's fine too, but I, I know he's going to, either, he's either going to have to build it or appeal the decision. Uh, I don't think it was built. There's nothing on the ground up there. It's just a driveway and a, and a property, uh, and um, you know, if we're using it as a turnaround, it kind of seems like it would open some liability. What happens if one of the fire trucks hits something while they're turning around in his, his lot?
Right.
Who owns it? You know, us, because we hit it? It's private property.
I don't think it was followed up on, so.
The special permit was issued when?
There was no special permit, so this was just the decision. Nothing's recorded at all.
Of a decision of the planning board, and the findings are, as that 216 letter are that Beth put on the screen. Um, there are thick files on this in the town hall, so if you want to look into that, Robert, uh, at your leisure, whatever, it, it's years of stuff on that lot. But I, and I remembered that discussion. I wasn't, I did not, was not a voting member of that um, hearing, but I remember the discussion. So that is what the findings were. The turnaround, big thing about the fire department and the school buses.
Well, I guess the question at hand is, should the planning board review this again?
I, I think it's interpretation right now. You wanted guidance in reference to the planning board decision, and it is supposed to be a turnaround that will uh, take fire trucks and school buses.
Yeah, that's how I read it, so I will relay that information to Mr. Hussey and see what he wants to do for his next move. And like I said, he could obviously appeal my decision. It would go to, go to the ZBA, or he could construct it, and then we can have Jim Smith approve it. Um, I, you know, when I read that it says the highways to approve, I, I, I think that means materials and methods, not, you know, how or what type of turnaround, more so, you know, did you put enough asphalt down? Do you have catch bases? Do you need, you know, things like that. I, I don't look at it like, you know, subject to the approval of, of the highway superintendent who can say, yeah, it's fine. They, they got plenty of room to turn around. I don't, I don't read it that way. I read it to say that, you know, you're approving the means and the methods, and then planning was to approve the actual turnaround, um, which I, like I said, it didn't get done. That's, that's what I've got.
Well, Eric, appreciate your time. Um, are you good, Robert? This is, like I said, there's lots of information at town hall on it, and I'm probably the only one on the board now that was on the board then, so that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you take a trip up there, it's pretty, pretty clear to see that there is no turnaround.
I think Eric could communicate just what he did say and um, and see what he decides to do.
Sounds good.
Yeah, let me know if you need anything from uh, planning board office, and I'll help you with it.
Nope, sounds great. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, uh, where are we now? We're at 7:23. Um, oh, can we quickly do? Uh, can, can you send Robert what he needs for 3.1 and 3.2 under work session, which has to do with tomorrow night's meeting? Robert, you're our representative to the special town meeting regarding the, you had volunteered to do this at the last meeting.
Right.
Uh, basically, it's just one, uh, one paragraph.
That's right. I think I have that information.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I printed that out for you, uh, Mr. Therian. It should be in a folder on the desk where you're sitting. There's a blue folder.
Yes.
So I printed out a copy of the draft report from planning board to special town meeting. Um, and I wanted to know if you wanted to make any changes or additions or deletions or personalize it.
I think those two items went past me and our town administrator, right?
No, this hasn't been submitted to the town administrator yet.
Oh, I thought about that. A what?
Yeah, it's, the town meeting is tomorrow, so if you finalize it tonight, I will submit it in the morning, and then um, Mr. Therian can bring it to town meeting floor.
All right. This has been reviewed with Adam, so uh, yeah, it was.
Oh, I'm sorry, not the planning board report we're talking. I'm sorry.
Oh, well, the, the um, yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, Robert, he's willing to speak to that if needed, okay? At the meeting. I will not be there.
Right. I, I, I assume it's just that, respond to the audience with any concerns or questions or how we arrived at where we did.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Um, yeah, let me see where we are now. I'm trying, I'm really trying to go through the 7:25. So uh, 3.3, uh, planning, I, I would, I would like to pass over that tonight in the work session. That kind of a full uh, meeting and, uh, so just to put that off to the, just have it continually on our agenda, please.
Yep.
And then 3.4 Campbell Farm Open Space Request for Compliance Certificates requested by Townsend Hill Realty Trust. Okay. Um, we have a couple of minutes here. Now, I, I did look at these, um, the report that was in the portal, right? And um, was it conservation's letter, conservation agent's letter? That um, still has some questions, or it's, it's not ready to be certified, right?
Um, I would, if you're, you're talking about the stormwater management permit, um, request for compliance, and that request was made by Campbell Farm and their engineers on tonight. So if you have specific questions about that, I would direct them to him.
Stan, hi.
Hi.
Um, yeah, do you want to comment on the comments with conservation agent?
Yeah, there was a couple of um, questions. Pardon my voice. I've got a, whatever. Um, I think Jessica pointed out that they, the paved apron that required on the first 50 feet of the road is not complete, and then she had some questions about one of the swales with the elevations, and I sent a letter to Beth saying that the elevations were, worked, that there was a positive flow in the swell. Beth had asked me to add some infom, some spot grades to the plan, which I haven't done yet. And I just wanted to find out if there was any other, any other feedback from the, from the board or anything else that you, that you'd like to see.
Any comments from the board?
I would just add that, remember, this is, this is a private road. The town is not going to accept this road. So that's a little bit different than a normal, a normal sign-off or a subdivision road. I understand this is for the stormwater permit, but it is going to be a private road.
I'm not, okay, I'm not sure how, how much, what that plays in as far as. how, how much, what that plays in as far as, um, the conservation agents comments, whether it was private or public.
I think that the, um, Jessica's comments were as the stormwater inspector, am I right, Beth? Cause there's no, there is no, um, there is no conservation permit or, or there wasn't anything required by conservation commission for the project. So if she, she would have commented as the stormwater inspector.
Yeah.
So I think that was her only two comments, if I, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so can you, is, can, can we put this off to our next meeting? And have you write whatever notes you have to write and get that to us for the ninth?
Sure. Yeah.
Is the board good with that?
Um, absolutely, yeah.
Yes. Okay, we don't need to make a motion for that, right, Beth?
No, I'll put it on the agenda again.
Okay. And thank you very much, Stan. I appreciate your cooperation.
You're welcome. I just want to point out that I will not be here on the ninth. It was this and it was one other thing that you were gonna talk about on the ninth, but I, I don't think I necessarily have to be there for you to talk about it, but I just let me know that I won't be here on the ninth.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if it's this and something else, we can put it on the 23rd.
Yeah. What was, I forget what the other thing was now. It was something we talked about.
No, 22 Main Street.
That, that's right. That, but that's on the 23rd.
Yep.
That on the 23rd, so.
Let's do them both then on the 23rd.
Okay.
Right? All right, Stan?
All right. That's fine.
All right.
Thank you. I'm really sorry. I am at a disadvantage here. Um, so now we are down, oh, wait a minute, where are we in time? 7:30. Okay. Stormwater management permit. Application for extension and modification, three wheeler road applicant Gary Shepherd. Stan?
I, I've been helping Gary Amadon, um, extend his permits and transfer the ownership. They sold the property to Gary Shepherd. So we've, we've dealt with conservation. They've extended the order of conditions and, uh, put Mr. Shepherd's name on there. The ZBA has done something similar. They just changed the name because that permit didn't need to be extended yet. And we're asking for an extension of the stormwater permit and to change the name to Gary Shepherd. This site was submitted and approved in 2016. It was peer reviewed at the time. And then it was, the permit was extended again in 2020. And we're asking to extend it once again and to change the name to, uh, the name of the Gary Shepherd. We did change the names in the O and M plan and all the places where the responsible party has been changed from Mr. Amadon to Mr. Shepherd. Beth and Jessica did a site walk with myself and Gary Amadon last week. And Jessica did point out a few things that need some attention, but those would be part of the ongoing permit, whether it's regardless of who the owner is. And if it was six months ago or six months from now, the extension really wouldn't affect that. That's just ongoing inspections during construction and, and things that need to be, things that need to be addressed that aren't quite up to snuff. There's a construction entrance that needs some additional stone put down. There's some erosion control that needs a little help. Uh, Jessica asked that the wetlands, the flags are, are gone at this point because they're old. That's the wetland be reflagged. And she had a couple of other things, but essentially what we're really asking to do is extend the permit and not change any of the conditions or any of the approvals. So all the conditions that are in the existing permit would get carried forward, which would be part of, uh, stormwater management and inspections and, and comments from the stormwater inspector and, and ability for the town to, uh, enforce those conditions.
I have a question.
All right, Robert, go ahead.
Um, is the intent of the new owner to continue with what, um, Mr. Amadon, the original deposit is now keeping it a, a hayfield? Is that?
Yes, that's, that's their intention.
No change of, of intent there, right?
No, no.
So we're assuming the new owner is going to continue with the original intent of the.
Right. Correct. To make that into a, a better, a better functioning agricultural field. And they've already built a, an agricultural building there where they, um, do some poultry processing. So they're committed to keeping it agricultural.
I understand that. Um, but I mean, okay. Okay, but the general sloping of that whole law was premised on building a hayfield, if I understand correctly.
Correct, correct.
And so that was the purpose of this massive change in contour or anything like that.
That's, that, that's correct. The, the contours that were there in the past were, made it very difficult to, to work that as a hayfield, although the Amadons did it. But there were, uh, there were some incidences there that made it, that, that made it obvious that this had to get, that this would be much better and much more productive if it was regraded.
And Stan, the regrading that's going to be done, does that fall into compliance with the, um, issues that were brought up by Jessica?
Yeah, those are, those are concerns that she had as the project is moving forward. So there's, on a project of this size, it takes whatever it takes. In this case, it's taken five or six years or it'll take another couple of years to finish. So during that interim, obviously the site is in flux and it changes daily or weekly. And sometimes when that happens, there's things that need to be addressed or need to be, there's things that need to be cleaned up or fixed or, or augmented or brought up to snuff. And I think those are all Jessica's comments were things that need to be, that need to be addressed there. And I think by extending the permit and changing the name of the owner, it gives the planning board as, as much teeth as they have had for the last six years on this project. It doesn't really change any of that. Doesn't change the planning board's purview over the site.
Okay, so in our extension, we can include some other comments that, or concerns that have been raised now that weren't there two years ago? Just question.
Um, yeah, you could do that. I mean, I think that it would, you know, if you extend the permit and make it clear in the permit that all of the previously approved conditions are still, will still be enforced. And the ongoing construction of the site will be monitored by the, by the stormwater inspector and reported to the planning board. I think that would, that would pretty much cover it. And I think, Beth, am I right that Scott from Shepherd's has been submitting stormwater reports on a regular basis?
Yes, every month.
Okay, so, so those have been, been, been being submitted. So that's kind of one of the biggest um, conditions is that, is that the stormwater reports get submitted. And some of these other things are, are really, I don't, I don't want to minimize them, but they're more housekeeping items than, than permit conditions. Cause the final conditions of the permit don't really have anything to do with what happens in, from the start to the finish. Everything in between is the construction phase.
Okay, I understand that. Um, okay, so that is something we can vote on, right? Beth, we can vote to extend this. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to extend the, um, stormwater management permit, number SM2020-02, application uh, for three wheeler road and the applicant now being named as Gary Shepherd. Is that correct?
Uh huh.
Correct.
And that shall be extended for two years from what date?
I would, today, if you vote on it. Would it be today?
I would say, yeah. I, I, I'll write it up and issue a new permit. So we have it in, in Gary's name. Um, so I'm not sure exactly when I'm gonna be able to do that. It's probably gonna be the first of next week.
I don't think, I don't think that makes that much difference, the exact date. Yeah.
Years from today. Yeah.
All right. So we just, um, all right, I will, uh, again, I've stated what the motion's gonna be to extend for two years for three wheeler road, uh, in the name of Gary Shepherd. You've got the permit number and do I have a motion?
I make a motion that, um, we recognize the transfer of property from Gary Amadon to Gary Shepherd. And that permit that was pre-existing, uh, the application and permit that was pre-existing is extended for another 24 months or two years.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Therian, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much, Stan.
Thank you.
You ready for your attendance?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
I've been on, I think I've been on enough tonight. I'll, I'll leave the meeting now. Thank you.
Miss you, Stan.
Right. All right. Well, I'm leaving anyhow.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Oh, is there something else?
Yeah.
That was the other thing that was on was, um, excuse me, I, I don't want to take up your time, but, uh, Turnpike Road was gonna be on.
But what you missed was, and, and now we're gonna have to change that, was that we, uh, 4.2 and 4.3, we moved to the ninth because we just received that information.
Right.
We moved it to the ninth, but, um.
It's not, yeah, that's.
You could still do that on the ninth, because that's just whether or not you're, you're accepting the permit, right? The public hearing wouldn't be on the ninth.
The public hearing is scheduled for the ninth. Yeah.
Oh, it is. Okay.
But you know, I haven't, I haven't posted that, published it yet. If you want, we can do it on the 23rd.
Yeah.
But that, I think that would probably be better. I mean, you could, you could open it and extend it, but if you haven't advertised it yet, you could do it on the 23rd. That way you'll get to see me for the whole night on the 23rd.
Yeah, I'm so excited. Yeah. Okay. All right. I'm glad we got that out of the way because we actually, you know, we addressed those two things when I had a little bit of time before.
Right.
Under correspondence. So we will, uh, adjust that to making that the 23rd. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all, so that brings us to 4.5 and Beth, I'm gonna let you take over.
That's all set. Uh, we had all our discussion there previously. So I leave that as a standing item, but the two stormwater permits with three wheeler road and Campbell Farm.
All right, thank you. And then, uh, notices from other towns, 4.6?
There were quite a few. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare a summary, but, um, they're all in your folders and they've been, uh, scanned in and they're in the folders. So.
Okay. I think we'll take our time going over that. And, uh, Carol, did you get anything regarding these safe routes to schools? Because I think the last meeting said there, you were going to have a meeting shortly thereafter.
We, we, we were supposed to meet with, um, Emmy and I was supposed to meet with the, uh, new, um, agent, Jordan Sales. Actually, um, Emmy never showed up to the meeting, so we were locked out in the cold. So Jordan and I had a little meeting outside and, um, he said he had been working with, uh, the middle school principal. Um, was supposed to, I have to get with Emmy and probably after the first of the year, try to set up another, um, meeting with him. Um, cause Emmy does a lot with the rec center. She's been more involved with the, uh, safe routes to school, like events and stuff.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. And so our next planning board meeting is January 9th. And hopefully, well, it seems like that may be a light agenda.
Uh huh.
And maybe we can do a little more on our regulations at that meeting where we won't have a public hearing.
Okay, I can stipulate those ahead of the meeting. Okay.
Okay. Now, yeah, okay. Um, and then, so are we good with, you're also stating that we're meeting on the 13th and the 27th of February?
Yes.
Okay.
They're all established. They're all hybrid, uh, in person and Zoom.
Okay. So, um, and God only knows when I'll be driving, so I, I don't know. I don't know where I'm gonna be doing what, but, um, anyway. So we are, is there anything else to come before us this evening? No. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:44 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:44 PM until December 2022.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call roll call vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Therian here.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you all and happy holidays.